It seems everybody's here, head by your head. We'll go ahead and call this September 4th Circuit Council meeting order and ask for the call log.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lyden?
Here.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. If y'all noticed, Dr. Middlebrooks is in the back tonight. He wants to see what it's like to be a citizen for a while, so you may hear a few votes from the back wall. That if the court will provide the indication, Mr. Posey, click.
Hello, Mr. Green. Lord, we thank you for this day, both for its blessings and its challenges. Here are the prayers in the hearts of all present tonight, especially those in need of your peace, whatever their struggles may be. We ask your blessings and protection on our military and their families. We pray for the continued blessings on this city, its citizens, its leaders, and its employees. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen. One, two, three. United States of America, and to your beloved, for which saints, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this point, open to a motion on the ballot.
Who for approval do I read?
Second.
Motion to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Next, we have candidate Jefferson County Circuit Court, Philip Brown. Can you give us a few?
I am, sir.
Come on down.
Really appreciate you so much, you allowing me to take a moment of your time this evening.
You have a radio.
Well, thank you, thank you. They say I have a face for radio as well.
That's perfect.
That's complimenting, not nothing. Just wanted to come here to solicit your support and to help me usher in a new day for Jefferson County. The Circuit Clerk's office for which I am running is the administrative arm of the Department of the Court System. Certainly, it's not one that is highly known like the judgeships are, but yet it is vitally important. And my administration is pledged to be focused on three particular areas. One is efficiency. I think it's highly important that the court system operate at the speed of business. It's not very effective or efficient when we don't conduct business in a timely and speedy manner. Our judges, as well as our attorneys, that depends on their livelihood and certainly their, as citizens of our community, they also need the court system to operate at very peak efficiency. Also effectiveness, I think it's highly important that we are able to conduct business in an open and transparent manner, so that we not only meet the needs that are legally required, but also the needs of the community as we serve with their funds and dollars. And then there's an area that are really important, and I guess this comes from my background as an educator. I've been a teacher in the Jefferson County system for the last sixteen years, and I'm going to focus a little bit on education. I think it's very important that our young men and women do not get their first dose of what the court system is like when they stand in front of a judge. I'd like to use that administrative branch to reach out to the community, to the school system, to be able to help them to see exactly how the court operates and how it functions. That is my position. I think it's very important that we reach out to the community and be able to make a difference in Jefferson County. I think it's time for a new day in Jefferson County. My name is Philip Brown, and I'm asking for your support for Circuit Clerk, Jefferson County.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have some proclamations. First, we have Gynecological Cancer Awareness Month. Rice, are you coming down for this?
Yes. By Kelly Rice.
Rice not going to come with?
Not this time.
He knows where his race starts. Whereas gynecological juvenile cancer is among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States. More than ninety-eight thousand women will be diagnosed, and more than thirty thousand women will die from these diseases this year. The absence they leave in our hearts will be deeply felt forever. Whereas the Laura Randall Brown Foundation and their State Field Initiative raise awareness of all juvenile cancers people throughout the state battle now. And whereas the good health and well-being of women in our state and the city of Hoover enhance that increased awareness of juvenile cancers and their symptoms and treatments. Whereas it is also crucial that all women in our state and the city of Hoover take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with these cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations, so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. Whereas we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those currently battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, and research, so that the women of our state, the city of Hoover, might be spared from them in the future. I encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness of juvenile cancers. Now therefore, I, Frank Pivacato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, Alabama, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and encourage all residents of Hoover to work together to raise awareness of juvenile cancer. I do commend this observance to all our citizens. Laura, already made her last count. I need to see certificate of authenticity. Mayor?
Yes, we would like to invite Sarah Kennedy, ma'am. Talk about wanting to recognize the Nurses for Nephrology Nurses Week. She is a Hoover resident as well?
Oh, yes. My friend also told you.
Uh-oh. Is he getting a raise?
I hope so.
Come on. Whereas nearly thirty million Americans suffer from kidney disease, and every year many Alabama citizens, including children, adults, elderly individuals, are diagnosed with kidney disease. Whereas the death and breadth of the nephrology nursing profession meets the different emerging kidney disease and other health care needs of the population of Alabama. Whereas the American Nephrology Nurses Association is working to advance healthcare to Americans with kidney disease before they suffer complete organ failure, increase awareness in local communities, possibly influence patient outcomes, and keep nephrology nurses abreast of the latest treatments, kidney-related research. Whereas nephrology nurses function as educators, direct caregivers, coordinators, to help patients manage their lives while effectively dealing with their health issues. Whereas the number of new patients diagnosed with kidney diseases doubled in each of its last two decades, the demand for nephrology nurses will persist to expand as this trend is effective in the future. Whereas more qualified nephrology nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of patients who are experiencing or at risk for kidney disease. Whereas along with the American Nephrology Nurses Association, the Hazel Taylor Hannah Chapter has declared the week of September ninth through fifteenth, 2018, as Nephrology Nurses Week, to celebrate and honor the unselfish work nephrology nurses perform each day to maintain the health of thousands of individuals with kidney disease. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Frank Pivacato, designate the week of September ninth through fifteenth, 2018, as Nephrology Nurses Week, and ask that all residents of Alabama join me in honoring the nephrology nurses who care for patients with kidney disease. Be further resolved that the residents of Alabama celebrate nephrology nursing's efforts to advance patient care and reduce the incidence of kidney disease, show our appreciation for Alabama nephrology nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Please, Mr. Chris Carpenter here?
Please come down, please.
Whereas children are a future of society's greatest asset. Committed families shape and guide children by preparing them for obstacles and encouraging them to overcome life's demanding challenges. Whereas the cornerstone in orderly society is family. But Alabama's families have grown progressively weaker, and children are living in a world where TVs, cell phones, and electronic devices have replaced playgrounds and conversation. Whereas children who spend significant time with both parents show lower risk of suicide, dropout, insufficiency, incarceration, and drug abuse. However, the importance of children having two parents is diminishing in society. As approximately forty thousand Alabama children a year experience four-hour visitation with one parent only two to six days a month. Whereas the widespread availability of illegal drugs from outside the state, increased local manufacture of illegal narcotics, and the growing problem of prescription drug use are all contributing factors to the increased drug exposure among Alabamians, especially teenagers. Whereas children who concern inactive parents are far less likely to exhibit risky and unhealthy behaviors such as smoking, drinking, or using illegal drugs because of the valuable time spent with parents. The positive example set by parents and social scientists agree that shared parenting should be ignored for children of all ages. Whereas simple daily activities like sharing mail or conversation or book can have an enormous impact on the life of the child. Strong and engaged families help build a strong Alabama. It is our responsibility as concerned family members to help create a solid foundation for the future health and happiness of all of Alabama's children. Whereas Family Day in Alabama has grown to promote the importance of family interaction, connecting kids throughout day and week. Distressed children need both parents during Family Day week. We honor the devotion of parents and recognize their critical role in teaching children positive and healthy behaviors. Whereas we encourage all Alabamians to visit the familyday.org for information on talking with children about the perils of drug use. We call on community and state leaders to support shared parenting because of the benefits for children. Now therefore, I, Frank Pivacato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, to hereby proclaim September twenty-four, 2018, as Family Day, and the week of September twenty-third through September twenty-ninth, 2018, as Family Week. The city of Hoover encourages its, join together, conserve it this day and week by spending time with their families, by engaging in appropriate ceremonies and activities to honor and strengthen both our cities and states' families. I hear we have a board recognition.
Yeah, we got some really, really great folks that work for us and go above and beyond often to make sure that Hoover is on the cutting edge. This is a great example I want to talk to you about tonight. Mindy Wyatt, Mindy, come down. Mindy's been with us now for eighteen years. She's an application system specialist, just does a great job, great customer service skills, a very nice lady. But one thing I know about her for sure, she's not a clock watcher. You can come through City Hall early, she's here, and she's here late at night as well. Type of job that she does is pretty demanding. It's just not an eight-to-five job, is it, by any means? Because of deals with IT, and Melinda wrote a beautiful synopsis of what you do, but the words are so big, I don't know that I can read all of them. Mindy provides project management and business intelligence strategies and technical user support for wide variety of application systems, business processes, IT. She does project management for us, and that's what she's up here for today. She works with vendors and end-users, evaluate applications and best practices, which is important. She troubleshoots, she analyzes for us, and resolves a great deal of technical issues. She works on really difficult projects in our city, and she has taken upon herself to become certified as a project management professional. And this is something that you just can't get overnight. It takes a lot of time after you've worked all day long. She has approved seventy-five hundred hours of experience leading and directing projects. Thirty-five hours of project management education, and she has to sit for a four-hour, two-hundred-question exam that covers ten knowledge areas such as stakeholder engagement, communication, scheduling management, cost management. And it's very important. We deal with multimillion-dollar projects here, and she is our only certified project manager that I know of. We're grateful that you would take this on, and it just shows, again, the caliber of individuals that we have. And I think it's important to recognize folks like this that do go above and beyond, and just want to tell you thank you, and I'm grateful for all that you do for our city.
That's it in the court section. Mr. Weill wants to say anything about his candidacy.
I think the group appreciates that.
Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-eight, eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for fiscal year ending September thirty, 2018, as set forth on the issued passage of the resolution.
Do you approve Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-eight, eighteen?
Second.
Motion to the second. This is to purchase a blotter scanner in the city clerk's office, and funding is to be found from excess projects in one of these places left over during this year. So not having to tap into any other resources. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Sitting here, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-nine, eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution adopts compensations for pay scale range and structure for certain city positions as set forth on the issued passage of the resolution, including premium pay assignment for fire department employees assigned as apparatus operators, police department employees assigned as field training officers, and emergency communication employees assigned and certified staff.
Mr. President, I know there's been some conversations, quite a few actually, over the last several weeks, and even some today, based on some data, but I know I just really received that and had the opportunity to review. I'm sure there'll be some discussion tonight, and you'll be open to that. We might entertain a conversation before we get to the board.
Yes, sir. Mr. President?
Excuse me. I have a whole lot to say about it. I think we've hashed it up and down, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I know I've got numerous, but I think that mine would be best placed, maybe with Mr. Rice president, mayor, best placed. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. President, I have a few questions.
I am, Dr. Middlebrooks.
I had a number of more questions until the recent revised edition came out this afternoon, which I have to say I haven't had a good opportunity to really pore over. I do know that the police chief and the fire chief was amended, which I applaud the administration for. There is one, just one other position really that I would like to amend the pay scale for, and that would be the police executive officer. The current proposed grade is a nine, which includes overtime, and I understand that he receives overtime quite often. I would request, and after talking to the chief, the chief, I think, is supportive of the idea that that position moves to a grade eleven and becomes overtime exempt.
If I could add on that, you know, we would want to do a, and we would, of course, have a consultant update proper Fair Labor Standards Act analysis, just to make sure that that position in its duties, we can exempt, not necessarily just on salary, I just want to put that in there.
If we decided to go that route, would we need to amend this ordinance before voting, or how would we go about changing that proposal?
Do you have some other amendments?
My next question deals with two, I don't know if they need to be dealt with in this salary compensation structure or the upcoming employee handbook revision. But one deals, I know an initiative that you've been studying quite often is the subordinate supervisor rule. Through my research, what the US government does for that is they ensure that a supervisor is always at a higher level of pay than their subordinate. If a subordinate is at a higher step, therefore be paid higher than the supervisor, that supervisor would receive three percent higher than the highest pay subordinate under. So I would like to recommend that we follow that same rule. One other rule that I'd like to see included is a longevity pay bonus for those employees that eventually top out at the pay scale and sit there year to year, not receiving any more additional pay. It's been a long time since we've had a cost of living increase. I believe this would give them something to look forward to and be based upon their employee review. As a council, we would need to decide what that longevity bonus would be. I recommend somewhere between two and three percent as a one-time lump sum. Those are my three questions, really.
Dr. Middlebrooks, have you researched how much those will cost?
I've submitted questions, but no, I haven't received the answer quite yet on that. Mr. Lyden?
Mr. President, one concern I have, if we paid Gallagher was a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred dollars?
Hundred fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Thousand dollars. And they are the professionals that did this study. I'm just concerned if we go through and start cherry picking, you know, there are several that I personally think should be a good salary myself, but I've sort of taken a step back because I'm not a professional in that field. I'd just like to caution us as far as those that professionally do this.
Again, I would agree with Mr. Green to a certain extent, except there were certain things that, I mean, that was a high-level aggregate study. I know there's a concern with a couple of the magistrate positions in the court, and we're still looking at the surrounding communities that pay significantly more or a significant higher amount, you know, not huge amount, but I think the study was a good one. But there's always things, there is cherry picking, and there's also looking at specific instances where the aggregate data might not have gotten it right, much the same way as we've made adjustments to some of the existing things. So I would like, much similar to Dr. Middlebrooks' questions, there's still a little, small amount of, just a couple of questions I have to make sure. This is, for lack of a better term, a big deal. We haven't upgraded the pay scale in quite a while, and this will lock it in in many ways for a long time. So before we lock it in, I would appreciate, I mean, however much, it shouldn't take much more time to get the answer to my question. I don't know about Dr. Middlebrooks and some of the other questions.
Do you know about how long the term time is with Ms. Ray whether before any questions are supposed to be posed by the council?
Because she's fairly quick to respond. I know she has other clients as well, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't get an answer to a lot of these questions we did this week.
And from her speaking, I understand this is going to be a long-term relationship. The city will be turning to them in the future. Are there any additional costs?
She has offered, to answer your question, no, sir, there would be no additional costs. She has offered to provide us with a number based on our market position in our geographical area every year to possibly adjust the salary scale for inflation and other factors, but that would not require any expenditure of funds.
Mr. President?
There's been a lot of talk about senior, let me ask you a broader question. There's two-hundred-and-eighty-nine people in your class, one of you are grade eight in here, fifty-seven of which are very, very close to the end of that schedule. Where do you see, looking forward, or in your conversation with the consultant, where do they go once they top out in that schedule? Because there's a lot of folks who have one in the area, and surely some of them are going to move up to different classifications. And I'm just curious with that, as we think forward, looking at where this is going to be five, two years from now, five years from now, a lot of these folks that are just topping out here, surely we're going to move them somewhere. Do you have an estimation of where that would be?
I wouldn't, Mr. Posey, I wouldn't say anybody would be moving classifications unless it was actually part of an emotional process. I do think, to answer that question, we'd be dovetailing back into Mr. Smith's last point, in that rather than what is typically done with these studies is getting adopted, and then they're just static till a cost of living adjustment is applied, that we would look, all of us would look at possibly making those annual adjustments to increase the scale as a whole, to reflect the appropriate market level of pay.
And one of those groups, because I marked six, eight, and nine is the three groups that really stuck out to me, that had the bulk of our employees in it. One of those, I think it was nine, is that correct? That was adjusted, that anyone, is that the group that was adjusted?
It was adjusted. Excuse me, one of the revisions.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify on that, for those independents, that the mayor's request, adjustments were made to, slight adjustments, albeit to pay grades five, seven, and nine, in order that no employee would be assigned to a job class that would have a lower maximum than what they currently have.
Any other questions? From the council? So there's one question that I came up with, pretty broad. People that were hired in on the current pay schedule. If we go to the new schedule, I heard it was stated Thursday, I believe, that somebody with experience, not since, a fair amount of experience, would be able to come in and they step forward. Are the people that were hired in earlier, that are step three, are they going to automatically go to the step four? So if the guy that was hired in January isn't making less than a guy that gets hired the day after his pass?
That's a good question. I can tell you basically experience from the last time we did one of these studies, which was ten years ago, almost ten years ago, that there was no remedy for individuals in those situations. There's not a plan in place now with the adoption desk to counter those situations. It would certainly be at the discretion of you gentlemen to possibly implement such a procedure. Of course, it adds to the cost, but there is equity consideration to that.
Thank you, sir. Anything from the audience? Sitting here, none? We have yet to have a motion. I have a wish, but I'll wait to see if there's a motion.
Mr. President, before I make a motion, I want to assure the employees of this city that I know, and I think I speak for this council, that there's a great deal of excitement among the employees about the possibilities that this change will bring. And I think I speak to the council in saying, week two, sharing the excitement on what it means for our employees to be able to only attract but retain the top talent in the municipal business. So we are...
was ten years ago, almost ten years ago, that there was never been a, were individuals in those situations. There's not a plan in place now with the adoption of this to counter those situations, certainly at the discretion of you gentlemen to possibly implement such a procedure. Of course, it adds to the cost, but there is an equity consideration to be added. Thank you, sir.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none, we have yet to have a motion. I have a wish, but I'll wait to see if I can motion.
Mr. President, before I make a motion, I want to assure the employees of this city that I know, and I think I speak for this council, that there's a great deal of excitement among the employees about the possibilities that this change will bring. And I think I speak to the council in saying, week two, sharing the excitement on what it means for our employees to be able to only attract but retain the top talent in the municipal business. So we are as anxious as you to get this passed, and please don't interpret our questions as questioning the overall study and plan going forward. I think we just want to get it right the first time, as was indicated here earlier. Having said that, and hearing the questions that have been posed certainly tonight, Mr. President, I would move the Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-nine, dash eighteen, to continue to September seventeenth.
Second.
Motion second, the council, the council.
Just one question, Mr. President. Man, that October first is right around the corner, and I know it's a faulted to not only finalize the salary scale, but also finalize the budget as well. Do you believe we'll remain on track by doing both of those items prior to October first?
I believe we'll be able to get them done prior to October first. I know that some people are going to be out of town. I'd like to take care of it before they go out of town. If we can all do our due diligence and get the questions answered and everything else, there's a possibility it can come up, I believe it will both come up for both the next meeting. I didn't, I can't say, but I do believe that we'll at least with the salary schedule, we'll get that taken care of, because whatever is done, it will affect the question. And I don't know if the mayor's office are going to have any recalculations to do with that, but we could probably some recalculate that. I think we got a correct copy out, it was late today, you should have the green box and I didn't have a chance to read it, so that was my error. I'm just, it's a lot better than I did. I don't know, so it's mentioning percentages. All right. More questions? Dr. Middlebrooks, would you like a roll call back there?
Not necessary.
All right, just pop loud. Motion second to continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed to the aye, the ayes have it, thank you. Item number eight, Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank Burcato to execute a credit card processing services agreement with Elbon and inspection services.
Move to approve Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-eighteen.
Second.
Motion second, this is just to bring building inspections where they can handle credit cards, much like many other departments within the city. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed to the aye, the ayes have it. Now we're going to have a public hearing on the abatement of nuisance to weed and rural drafts to the back. Which addresses we bring forward? This year, we just have one property today, and that's going to be the one on Lantana, it's fourteen twenty-three Lantana. And this is the second hearing, and I'll be voting on the favor to cut that, to grass. The owner's out of state, basically taken over from a deceased sister's estate, has not been able to do anything, has not been able to do anything. All right. This is listed as a public hearing. I'm sure why. Anybody here to speak on either side? If not, Mr. Corley, Resolution eighteen, fifty-eight, sixty-two.
Property located following address has an overabundance of grass and weeds present there on, presents a threat to health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Hoover, fourteen twenty-three Lantana Drive. This resolution declares the overabundance of grass and weeds present on the above property as public nuisance in order to the abatement thereof as provided on Alabama law.
Mr. President, move for approval of Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-two, eighteen.
Second.
Motion second, any comments or questions from the council? This has been continued from our last meeting. Anything from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed to the aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, fifty, fifty-eight, fifty-one, eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank Burcato to execute a developer and sold extension of mains agreement in a letter of authorization with permanent waterworks board regarding a water main extension to be installed within the Hoover Mountain Sound Access Road right of Hoover.
Move for approval of Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-one, eighteen.
Second.
Motion second, this is an improvement of the water mains within that complex, that South Access Roadway. Rice, is there anything you need to add? Everything's good? All right. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed to the aye, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, fifty-two, eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Burcato to execute an agreement with Elbon for transportation alternatives program project for the Hoover Municipal Complex, I want the project.
And we do have a request to continue to the call of the chair. Is that right, Mr. Whitaker?
President, I would move to each and every one of those deals be paid, the full as presumed as opposed.
Second.
Opposed second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed to the aye, the ayes have it. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. One update I would ask of the mayor's office. I know the last, most like two years, we've been evaluating our assets, evaluating, solidating things down, so we had a very detailed two years of dealing with budgets and things of that nature. It was one topic that was discussed from time to time again, but I know your schedule kind of bringing it back up sometime in the future regarding Audger Garden. If possible, can you give me some understanding on where we are with that?
Yes, Mr. Gray, I'd say we've been in conversations with their board, as you know, for probably well over a year, and we want to bring hope, thought is to bring the gardens into or under the city of Hoover. So we've included in this year's budget, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and of course, they are operating. And then once the salary spending is adopted, we'll know where their employees will fit in that scale, better develop budget. We will do that, and we will bring the budget and proposal to the city council to make a determination, determination to accept this proposal and actually bring the gardens into the city. And it's very important that, one of the things that we've made really clear with the leadership of Audger Gardens is that it's probably a nine-hundred-thousand to a million-dollar a year operation. We're planning to get about three to fifty right now. We'll get, we'll save money in some areas when we bring them in, in terms of accounting and security and IT and other things that we can bring under our umbrella, save them some operational costs. But it's still going to be important that Audger Gardens continues to raise money for their fundraising efforts to make up that what could be around six-hundred-thousand dollars a year. So we just want to make that perfectly clear, and we are pushing forward with that plan in mind, and once the, it sounds like y'all will probably get this salary survey done by the end of the month, I think we'll have something, probably in the next sixty days, maybe, yes, I would think.
Yes, it did, so it's been from day to day, or at least October first, sixty days from October first, we expect to see some type of, yes, presentation to the council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we talked a little bit about this before the meeting, this is, I know some of these folks who are watching, we're going to get back on short-term rentals, correct? Awesome.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the audience? Satisfied group? Seeing none, we're adjourned.